Hello, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the South Kingston Town Council. It is Monday, September 9th. The time is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, in the middle of the great past.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President De Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilman McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to take item, let's see what it is here, 9D and bring it, is that right? 13D, I'm sorry, which is the Purple Heart Town Resolution. Bring that forward first. Which reads, "Purple Heart Town. Whereas the town of South Kingston, Washington County, Rhode Island, has always supported its military veteran population; and whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782; and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America; and whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure that we never forget; and whereas the state of Rhode Island has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients; and whereas South Kingston appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms, and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they have earned. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby proclaim the town of South Kingston a Purple Heart Town."
I'll make a motion to approve 13D.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now, I know, Tiger, you're here to speak on this, and we have a resolution that I'm going to hand to you, but I know that you also had some words and something that you wanted, so please step up to the podium.
Thank you very much. I'm very grateful the VFW is for you recognizing our Purple Heart veterans, and I'm very appreciative of Dale adding one more ice cube tray to her already over full refrigerator. And so, it's an honor. We're the fourth town in Rhode Island to do this, and I've already gotten permission from DOT, thanks to John Shaw, who pointed me in the right directions. I'm going to just get a locker next to the DOT guy from the banner that we had put up and all of that, but they're great. So we'll have that up. It's ordered, and we'll have the signs up probably within a week at the entrances to South Kingston. In order to recognize this milestone, we at the VFW wanted to present back to the town of South Kingston a plaque just recognizing the date. On this Friday, we have an event, a fundraising event for the Purple Heart Foundation at the Sons of Liberty, right off of the intersection of 108, in the factory complex in 108 and 138. Should be a great event. We have, the Purple Heart Foundation has representatives there, as well as another, a couple other tag-along veteran groups are coming down. It's pretty cool. And Sons will donate a certain percentage, I don't know what, to the foundation, but we're honored for that. And so, thank you so much. You guys are doing good. And Rob, the flag looks squared away since my last visit. I appreciate that.
Joe.
So can we do, I'm sorry.
What time is the event, Friday?
Five till whenever. And so, thank you so much. Can we do a quick little photo thing, presenting back and forth? And I apologize to everyone. One other thing that I just want to bring up, on Wednesday, September 11th, for our second year, we are going to the schools with the police and fire and the EMS, caravanning to all the schools, and the school kids are making cards for the first responders of our town. Last year, we raised 900. This year, all the schools are really involved, and so we're starting our day caravan-style at Curtis Corner. 500 kids will be marching through the school, high-fiving and all of that. And so, we're real excited. It's going to be a great day. No coffee needed. And so, be proud of our school kids. They're awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
Tricia, my junior vice, can we come up and, how do we want to do this?
We can come down in front here, and we can hand these off to each other. If anybody wants to take a picture, please do. Excuse us while we get this done, folks.
Yeah, sure. Appreciate if you all can come out. Uh, just, what happened? Uh... All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Thank you all so much. That brings us back to the beginning of the agenda. I think the item four is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
I'll make a motion to approve for A, B, and C.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries. And that brings us to item five, the consent agenda. We've...
We want to add... Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a...
We need to amend that to include the resolutions for the Boy Scouts.
So, an amendment to add 13A, B, and C.
Make the amendment to add 13A, B, and C to the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved. So this is just to amend the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now, a motion to approve the consent agenda, if you wanted to.
Rory already made that, right? So I'll second that.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And that brings us to item six, licenses. 6A is a resolution granting a vixhling license to, I don't know, Alchehead Enterprises, doing business as Izone, Forton Road in Kingston, subject to approvals by the Communication Superintendent, Police Chief, and the Rhode Island Department of Health. Application by Nadal Alchehead.
Hello.
Welcome.
This is my school president, late one, trying to say, where do you guys get that?
Great. If you could both just state your names for the record, then.
My name is Nadal Alchehead.
My name is Nadal Alchehead.
All right. Welcome up. So tell us about Izone.
Okay. This is going to exist. I used to own it. Now my brother runs it. He just, like, working the license to get it. I used to have the extension hours after 2:00 PM, AM, I meant to say. And we need those hours because the business base, we seize them because the hours included. And those couple hours extra help us do things because so much, like, business is done.
What do you guys sell? Sorry. What kind of products? Is it food-based?
I need, uh, home stuffs. Obviously, you know, everybody, there's no alcohol or...
Dale?
6A is a vixhling license, which is for, um, on a, uh, or... Yeah. Yeah.
Very good. All right. So any other questions on the vixhling license as it stands at this point? All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 6A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. So we'll see you back here. 6B is a resolution granting a Class F 19-hour beverage license to the South Kingston Chamber of Commerce. This is for the Taste of Southern Rhode Island event, to be held on Thursday, October 24th, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at 2984 Commodore Perry Highway. Application by Elizabeth Berman, Executive Director. I think we can probably take this and 6C, which is for the next day, together. But tell us again about this great event.
I will recuse, as my wife is an employee of the Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, everyone. Elizabeth Berman, Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. The Taste of Southern Rhode Island, which is on Thursday, October 24th, is a culinary and beverage tasting, where our members get to highlight their winter menu. The event on Friday, October 25th, is a dance party. We have the band Sugar there, put out a big stage and a dance floor. We do a cash bar and food on that night as well. And any questions? This is the eighth year that we're going to be doing the event, the third year that we're doing it at Clark Farms.
Liz, it's an awesome event, and I've been every year, I think, almost.
I think so.
But I do have a quick question from a safety standpoint. Last year, someone disconnected the generator, if I remember correctly.
They did, yes. With three minutes left...
So what are your plans for making sure that it doesn't happen again?
Yeah, that was three minutes left to the show, and an angry person unplugged our generator. The generator company should have been watching it. They were on the other side of the generator, listening to the music.
Okay.
So we did have two police detail officer, I'm sorry, police security officers there, so they were able to catch up with the guy and get everything squared out. So we will have police there again, and the generator company is on full watch this year, for sure. And then we have the traffic detail there for the Taste, because that's the higher-traffic evening.
Now, I know how people like to procrastinate. Has the event sold out this year yet? Are you still...
Not yet. We usually sell out about a week or so before the event, so you still have time to get your tickets, for sure.
How can you get your tickets?
You can get them at line at srichamber.com, or stop by the office and pick them up.
Very good.
What are the tickets going for this year?
For the Taste, it's $40 a ticket, 50 for non-Chamber members, and then you get special discounts if you get groups of 10 or more. For Sugar, it's $25 a ticket.
And one last question. How many people bought tickets last year for the Taste and for the show?
Last year for the Taste, it was just around 800, and for Sugar, we were at around 600.
It's a big turnout.
It is, yes. Yeah, big South County reunion. It's nice.
Liz, I'd just like to say, I think you've done a fine job in your tenure as Executive Director. You've really built up the Chamber over time to a point where it's one of the more highly competitive in the state, and I wish you luck in your new role as you exit the Chamber, but hopefully there can, the group can find someone to fill the role and, you know, continue the progress that you've created. So, thank you for what you've done, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much, Rory. We have, we're starting our job search on Wednesday. We have our first round of interviews, of which I am highly involved, so we're going to be picking somebody great to carry on the Chamber.
When is your last day?
October 31st. So the Taste will be my last big party. It'll be a great time.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to approve items 6B and items 6C.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. 6D is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Oktoberfest Arc Festival on Saturday, October 5th, on Main Street, between Robinson Street and Kenyon Ave, and in the municipal parking lot from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM to the Wakefield Village Association of Peacedale, Rhode Island, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the Finance Director. Application by Janet Bertwell, member, Main Street. Welcome, Jen.
Hi. My name is Jan Bertwell, representing the Wakefield Village Association tonight. This will be our, our fourth year of doing the Arc Festival slash Oktoberfest. Each year, it gets better and better, and we started out with the idea that the event would spotlight the town of Wakefield and also be a very family-friendly event, so that it's a celebration not only of Wakefield, but of all the residents of Wakefield. This year, we're, as we did last year, we're sort of coordinating with Parks and Recreation. They're having an event behind, in Wakefield School, so people, the kids can go from one event to another. We're going to have Touch a Truck. There'll be Disney characters roaming around Main Street, meeting the kids. There'll be all kinds of really great activities, family-friendly. We have plenty of parking lined up. We have a trolley that will be going from the downtown area to the various parking areas, so that it's easy for people to get in and out, and, and it's going to be a great time. So, any questions?
Is there a website or a Facebook page?
Yes, there's a Facebook page.
So I'm assuming it's just Wakefield Village Association, and then you can find the event?
Yes. Yes. I, I believe so. You'll have to search that.
Just trying to make it easy for people to find information on it.
Yeah. You would ask that question.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve 6D.
Second. So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Looking forward to it. All right. 6E is a resolution granting a vixhling license to Be Smooth of Forton Road in Kingston, subject to approval by the Rhode Island Department of Health. Application by Timothy Picard, owner. Welcome. Are you Timothy?
I am indeed.
Great. Tell us about Be Smooth.
So it's going to start off as a smoothie company, and then we're hoping to branch out and go a little bit farther with it down the road, but right now, it's just my girlfriend and I, and we're going to hire somebody to run the register. And as we grow, we hope to extend into granola and some of the other crunchy kind of stuff.
What are your hours going to be?
I think we're going to start off pretty small and just do something like 7 to 11 in the morning, and then possibly an evening shift, and then, once we have enough employees and interest, maybe extend throughout the entire day. I still attend school, so it makes it a little difficult to be open all day.
Gotcha. Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve 6E.
Second. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. 6D is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Oktoberfest Arc Festival on Saturday, October 5th, on Main Street, between Robinson Street and Kenyon Ave, and in the municipal parking lot from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM to the Wakefield Village Association of Peacedale, Rhode Island, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town and issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured for the event in the amount specified by the Finance Director. Application by Janet Bertwell, member, Main Street. Welcome, Jen.
Hi. My name is Jan Bertwell, representing the Wakefield Village Association tonight. This will be our, our fourth year of doing the Arc Festival slash Oktoberfest. Each year, it gets better and better, and we started out with the idea that the event would spotlight the town of Wakefield and also be a very family-friendly event, so that it's a celebration not only of Wakefield, but of all the residents of Wakefield. This year, we're, as we did last year, we're sort of coordinating with Parks and Recreation. They're having an event behind, in Wakefield School, so people, the kids can go from one event to another. We're going to have Touch a Truck. There'll be Disney characters roaming around Main Street, meeting the kids. There'll be all kinds of really great activities, family-friendly. We have plenty of parking lined up. We have a trolley that will be going from the downtown area to the various parking areas, so that it's easy for people to get in and out, and, and it's going to be a great time. So, any questions?
Is there a website or a Facebook page?
Yes, there's a Facebook page.
So I'm assuming it's just Wakefield Village Association, and then you can find the event?
Yes. Yes. I, I believe so. You'll have to search that.
Just trying to make it easy for people to find information on it.
Yeah. You would ask that question.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve 6D.
Second. So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Looking forward to it. All right. 6E is a resolution granting a vixhling license to Be Smooth of Forton Road in Kingston, subject to approval by the Rhode Island Department of Health. Application by Timothy Picard, owner. Welcome. Are you Timothy?
I am indeed.
Great. Tell us about Be Smooth.
So it's going to start off as a smoothie company, and then we're hoping to branch out and go a little bit farther with it down the road, but right now, it's just my girlfriend and I, and we're going to hire somebody to run the register. And as we grow, we hope to extend into granola and some of the other crunchy kind of stuff.
What are your hours going to be?
I think we're going to start off pretty small and just do something like 7 to 11 in the morning, and then possibly an evening shift, and then, once we have enough employees and interest, maybe extend throughout the entire day. I still attend school, so it makes it a little difficult to be open all day.
Gotcha. Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve 6E.
Second. So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Good luck. 6F is a resolution granting a miscellaneous peddler's license to Calf Bar LLC of Main Street, application by Elias Butros, co-owner. Is Elias here? Or is anybody here to represent this matter? Well, we can hold it till the end and see if anybody shows up, and then if not, we can continue it, I suppose. All right. That brings us to item seven on the agenda, public hearings. Public hearing 7A is a hearing relative to an application to perform construction activities within 25 feet of an historic cemetery in accordance with the South Kingston Town Code, Chapter 14, Planning, Article 4, Historical and Archaeological Cemeteries and Burial Sites. Application by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation to conduct land disturbing activities associated with roadway improvements to Old Tower Hill Road and Kingston Road to Route 1, adjacent to the Quaker Lot Cemetery, South Kingston Historic Cemetery, number 95, located on Assessor's Plot 57-2, Lot 41. And I don't know if we want to have RIDOT come up right away, or if there's some...
I'm going to have Kayla do a brief description, and then I think RIDOT will follow her.
Hi, all. Kayla Gray, your interim Director of Planning. So I just wanted to give a quick, quick introduction to the RIDOT folks who we have here and give you a bit of context from the planning department's review on it, for just a bigger-picture setting for you all. So from RIDOT tonight, we have Dario Quintana and Keith McDonald here from PAR Engineering, who've been working on the project. The scope of work relative to the cemetery is very modest. It's staying within the same footprint that's there, but the footprint that's there for the sidewalk is located within 25 feet of the cemetery. Pleasantly enough, a bit of research has been done on this cemetery by the Pettis Quamska Historical Society, also known as the South County History Center. They have acquired the property and manage it. They have done a ground-penetrating radar study of the property to locate the remains of those intermed there. They did make one additional request about a memorial that's in a little bit of fragile state due to its construction, and so you'll see that the draft resolution offered for you all acknowledges that and directs RIDOT to pay attention to it and notify the center if anything is found to be of concern. Relative to RIDOT, RIDOT has a programmatic agreement for projects that are considered minor of this scope, where they don't actually solicit comments from Rhode Island Historical Preservation Heritage Commission. It's part of their general agreement that minor projects have this no-impact category, so in your packets, you see that determination coming through there. So that's sort of a piece at play here as well. But with that, I'll hand it over to Keith and Dario to give you a bit more idea and for your questions.
Thank you.
Those who don't know me, my name is Dario Quintana. I represent RIDOT on this particular project, the Old Tower Hill. The project is actually out to bid. Actually, we have the bid opening tomorrow. We noticed the proceed should happen within 30, 30 days, but I, I'm assuming that this project won't hit the ground running until spring. If they can do some of the work during the wintertime, I'm sure that the contractor will attempt to do so. I'm going to let Keith McDonald, who represents PAR on our design end, to give you a little bit more information.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Keith McDonald from PAR, the project engineer. So basically, in this area, we're just talking about replacing the existing sidewalk within the same footprint, so removing the concrete surface down to the gravel subbase, prepping the gravel, replacing it. There is going to be some erosion control in this area, but if you're out there, it's kind of at the top of the hill, and there's some trees and some light poles, so we're staying on the roadside of that. We're not going beyond that. And then, you know, Dario mentioned that the bid opening is tomorrow, so there'll be a pre-construction meeting, probably in like 45 to 60 days. We'll make sure that the information relative to the marker is relayed to the contractor.
Questions?
Construction timeline?
Right now, we're looking at one season, so it'll be done next fall, starting in the spring, finishing up by the end of the fall.
Excellent. All right. Any other questions from...
Just a quick question, since you mentioned bids. Did you guys get a lot of bids for this project, or...
We'll find out tomorrow.
Oh, so, that's right. Okay. So hopefully, you got multiple bids.
We need more money. We'll be back.
All right. Well, if there's no more questions from the council, it is a public hearing, so we want to open up the opportunity to comment to the public. Is there anybody who would like to ask a question about this project, this particular part of the project? All right. Very good.
Dario, I would just like to, you know, express our interest and gratitude toward Rhode Island Department of Transportation for taking on this project. We think this is big for the downtown area in SK. You know, Old Tower Hill Road is due for a revamp, and we're really excited about this. We want to get this going as soon as we can, so we're with you 100%, and we're excited about this.
Yeah. We appreciate that this project has, you know, been expedited, it seems to me, having studied RIDOT projects in the past, so thank you.
I'm already making one for you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Then I think we're ready to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And do I hear a motion on 7A?
I'll make a motion to approve 7A.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing 7B is a hearing continued from August 13th, 2019, to consider an application requesting an amendment to the zoning map to rezone a portion measuring approximately 5.09 acres of the parcel identified as Assessor's Plot 72-2, Lot 34, from residential low-density, R80, to government and institutional, GI, as shown on the map on your agenda. The parcel is located off Kenyon Woods Way, application by Kirsar Solar LLC and by Peter and Diana Lee Dearoff. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hold on one second, John.
I have one communication dated July 12th, 2019, from the South Kingston Planning Board, with its recommendation in incorporating findings of fact, conditions of approval, findings of fact with consistency with the comprehensive plan, findings of fact with consistency with the purposes of zoning, and recommended conditions of zoning map amendment.
Thank you. Take it away, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Kirsar Solar LLC. The applicant's proposing to lease property off of Kenyon Woods Way that's owned by Peter and Diane Dearoff. The Dearoffs own two lots at the end of Kenyon Woods Way, which are designated as tax Assessor's Plot 72-2, Lots 21 and 34.
Construction timeline?
Right now, we're looking at one season. So it'll be done next fall, starting in the spring, finishing up by the end of the fall.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question since you mentioned bids. Did you guys get a lot of bids for this project?
We'll find out tomorrow.
Oh, so that's right. Okay. So hopefully, you got multiple bids.
We need more money. We'll be back.
All right. Well, if there's no more questions from the council, it is a public hearing, so we want to open up the opportunity to comment to the public. Is there anybody who would like to ask a question about this project, this particular part of the project? All right, very good.
Dario, I would just like to, you know, express our interest and gratitude to Rhode Island Department of Transportation for taking on this project. We think this is big for the downtown area in SK. You know, Old Tower Hill Road is due for a revamp, and we're really excited about this. We want to get this going as soon as we can, so we're with you 100%, and we're excited about this.
Yeah, we appreciate that this project has, you know, been expedited, it seems to me, having studied RIDOT projects in the past. So thank you. Very good.
I'm already making one for you.
All right, then I think we're ready to close this public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
And do I hear a motion on 7A?
I'll make a motion to approve 7A. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Public hearing 7B is a hearing continued from August 13th, 2019, to consider an application requesting an amendment to the zoning map to rezone a portion measuring approximately 5.09 acres of the parcel identified as assessors plot 72-2, Lot 34, from residential low-density, R80, to government and institutional, GI, as shown on the map on your agenda. The parcel is located off Kenyon Woods Way, application by Kirsage Solar LLC and by Peter and Diana Lee Dearoff. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hold on one second, John.
I have one communication dated July 12th, 2019, from the South Kingston Planning Board with its recommendation in incorporating findings of fact, conditions of approval, findings of fact with consistency with the comprehensive plan, findings of fact with consistency with the purposes of zoning, and recommended conditions of zoning map amendment.
Thank you. Take it away, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Kirsage Solar LLC. The applicant's proposing to lease property off of Kenyon Woods Way that's owned by Peter and Diane Dearoff. The Dearoffs own two lots at the end of Kenyon Woods Way, which are designated as tax assessors plot 72-2, Lots 21 and 34. Lot 21 is 14.7 acres in size, and it's in a GI zoning district. Lot 34 is 9.84 acres in size, and it's in an R80 zoning district. Both lots have been designated circled sites by the EPA, though the contamination is primarily on Lot 21. The zoning for Lot 21 was changed in December of last year from R80 to GI with a condition that it's restricted for use of solar energy. When that zone change took place, it was understood that additional testing would be contemplated, and at that time, the lot line would be moved to keep the contamination area on Lot 21 and to hopefully remove Lot 34 from the circle of designation. Since the previous zone change, the testing's been completed. The applicant's now proposing to transfer approximately five acres from Lot 34 to Lot 21 as an administrative subdivision. We're here tonight for the zone change for that five-acre parcel from R80 to GI. If the zone change is approved, the owners would then transfer the five acres from Lot 34 to Lot 21 so that the contamination's entirely on Lot 21, and Lot 34 would be released from the circle of designation. Lot 34 would have the remaining amount of land that's necessary for residential lot in a residential compound. The owners have been awarded a RIDM Green Economy Bond Brownfields grant to facilitate the site assessment, remediation, and redevelopment, as long as the site is used for solar energy development. The applicant, Kirsage, is proposing a large-scale solar project only on Lot 21. The planning board conducted development plan review and gave a positive recommendation, which the town clerk just mentioned, with several conditions that we're in agreement with. Tonight, I'd like to start out with Mark House from ES&amp;M. He's just going to discuss the proposed remediation. Now, also, we have Eric DiNardo, who's the project engineer, and Andrew Bernstein from Kirsage. So, Mark, if you want to come up and explain the project?
Mark House with Environmental Strategies and Management, ES&amp;M. This is a project that I believe when we last spoke, I kind of explained that it's been going on for quite some time, a septic disposal area that was used primarily from the '70s, well, 1970 to 1980, at which time, there was an identification of illegal dumping going on during that operation, at which point, the Department of Health closed that site. The EPA took over with some assessment, had contaminants were identified relatively low levels, so they put it back into the jurisdiction of the DEM. The DEM has been managing this site for about 25 years now. The difficulty with the site is the cost of remediation, and due to that cost, there's been an inability to pay by the owners of the property, as there's really no economic benefit even post-closure of that site for these folks. So we struggled for quite some time, and when the Green Economy Bond was passed in early election cycles, and then it's been re-approved in subsequent, it provided an avenue for these folks, especially since the last few have given a credit to those projects that actually included green energy component. So we were able to apply for a grant, which was awarded and is providing the funding necessary to get us through to cleanup, again, with the expectation from the DEM that the site would be used for solar. That is the economic development side, the Green Economy Bond. So we were real happy to see that. We were able to head out and do some more testing, which was just kind of summarized there. We were able to put our arms around the nature and extent of contamination. Again, both lots that were identified are both still under the jurisdiction of the state. However, we have provided enough data, and the state has given what's called a remedial decision letter, which basically is their concurrence with the definition of nature and extent, as well as the proposed remedy. And in this case, the proposed remedy is capping. There are some areas of the site where the capping has to be a little bit more significant, much like a landfill will have an impermeable barrier to restrict any infiltration from rainwater into groundwater. We have some of those areas on site that we'll have to manage. And right now, the state has approved the lot lines that you guys are looking at. So those were approved by the state, I believe it was early July, I'm sorry, late July, July 26th. We have provided a remedial action work plan, which just gives a little bit more definition to how that remedial work will happen. That is still under review with the state. We're expecting word back from them really any day now with regards to approval or questions. One thing I just want to note is that both of those lots are still under jurisdiction of the state, and to be quite honest, they'd like it all to remain under the jurisdiction of the state. We tried to manage things, and this has been a directive from a long time to try to allow for at least one more developed lot on that site. And the approach that was used to pull this, to re-line the lots, does many things, but one, it allows for capping of the waste. A portion of these lines had to move just to accommodate some of the new waste that was found during our last round of investigations. Two, we went a little bit beyond that to allow for greater coverage ratios that come closer to code here, and to allow for greater buffering from neighboring properties. It also allowed for us to meet the DEM grant managers, allowed for us to maintain what we set out to do with regards to the solar energy provided and the economic development provided from that. So we believe we've kind of hit all of our marks on this, and the remedial plan is ready to be implemented as soon as it is approved by the state. We're hoping that we can get actually the capping work done before the end of this construction season, which would then allow for the opportunity for the solar development to happen shortly thereafter.
Questions for Mr. House?
Mark, I'm sorry. Remind me, have these properties served by town water or by well?
Potable, so wells, private wells. And part of that investigation was not just to determine limits of waste, but was also to try to determine impacts to groundwater. So in the past, there were some impacts identified. We've conducted many, many rounds of groundwater sampling, and we've actually conducted a couple rounds of potable well sampling within the downgradient neighborhood. That is the Kenyon Woods Way neighborhood. Most of those were conducted with assistance from the Department of Health, and all latest rounds have been cleaned. So right now, we're really dealing with more of a direct impact, a direct contact issue, and capping is a viable, and it's the preferred alternative from the state.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mark, just one question.
Sure.
Did the planning board request additional testing over and aboard of what the DEM was going to require?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, John. Yeah, so the state of Rhode Island is happy with the groundwater monitoring that's been conducted to date. We've agreed, and by the way, it's, they're looking at this site as, you know, it's GI, but we're putting residential standards in play, so we're cleaning up to a residential standard, and as far as the groundwater, we're cleaning up to a GA standard. So although the state of Rhode Island is satisfied with the groundwater monitoring that's been conducted, that's proven that there's no continuing leaching of impacted issues into the groundwater, we're conducting an additional year's worth of sampling post-construction to make sure that, let's just say, we're stirring the nest. We want to make sure nothing continues on. And then, one year following the planned decommissioning of the solar site, so years from now, there would be another round just to make sure that the same doesn't occur.
One final question.
Yeah, so that is, that's the GA, the drinking water standards. That's what this site is being cleaned to.
Let me think of the last one.
That's okay.
Andrew Bernstein from Kirsage Energy. I think Mark covered most everything, but a quick summary that when ESM introduced us to the project, when he was looking for a solution, he spoke to several different solar development companies and the Dearoffs, and we got together and tried to look at how do we make the numbers work. I think the important thing here is when we applied for the grant, we were looking to do a larger project, but due to where we came out and due to what some of the requirements of the planning board, we're going to have probably 600 or 700 less panels we can speak more about, but we get put in more wooded buffers, we put in landscaping around, all requirements from the planning board. And one of the other things that we agreed to do, the request of one of the abutters, was to maintain the road, the access road, Kenyon Woods Way, well, not really access road, the road to their house as well. But as many of you may know, we'll have a pickup truck there maybe four times a year. So once the project's built, and we're responsible for keeping the road to the same standard once we're completed. So all the projects that Kirsage has done in Rhode Island, we try to be good neighbors. There's mostly on brownfields. Some of you may know, we've done two superfund sites in town in a landfill, and we're doing other sites throughout the state. I guess the greatest challenge on this project that we spoke to the council way back in December has just been timing, because we had to get this, because the grant, we had dates and timing on the grant. We have timing on, probably the greatest timing is on National Grid. We owe National Grid in two days $300,000, or we lose our place, if you will, in the line for interconnection. So it's been a tight timing schedule. We would expect to build the project probably in the early spring, depending on weather, but ESM has to do their work. They're going to do all the work that needs to be done in terms of remediation, any clearing that's necessary for the site for their work. So we're going to come in and just build the project. I think that's the highlights, the benefits, I think you probably know, but the town will receive $400,000, approximately additional taxes as mandated by the state. The off-take for this, if you will, which is maybe another important fact, is public and nonprofit entities. We've signed everyone up, including the Narragansett School District. The town of South Kensington is already taking everything they can from our other project, but it's all nonprofits, and over 25 years, that's approximately $7 million of savings. So that's the highlights there.
I have a quick question. How does this change, I guess, affect your, I guess, the financial aspect of this project?
How does the change in panels?
Well, adding, taking the other parcel of land and rezoning it.
So originally, when we applied for the grant, we were looking at approximately 10,500 panels. We're now down to 9,900 with the changes from the planning board. So it's a negative effect on us. Part of it is the size, and part of it's what's happening in the market. Right now, there's been tariffs that have been put on that everyone's aware of, and it's very difficult to get panels. The prices have gone up. So it's a negative impact to us over 25 years of about $1.75 million. So it pushes out our return, but doing a solar project, you really don't see returns until year seven, for the most part. It's like building a building. Any other questions?
Andrew, I remember a question from Mark, but I think you can answer it.
Okay.
One of the conditions that the planning board requested is that the solar project doesn't commence until the remediation is completed.
Correct. I mean, we can't, because it has to be. But this is probably one of the best sites we've come across. It's depressed. The panels will face south. We're away from a butters. As many people know, there's no glare from the panels. They try to absorb as much sunlight as possible. There is a terrific buffer, 50 to 75 feet. We increased it. When we originally were looking at it, we thought it would just be 25 feet, but per the request of the planning board, we went to greater buffers around the outside of the project.
Do you want to add anything else, guys? Did you have somebody else you wanted to call for as a witness?
Eric DiNardo is the project engineer on the solar aspect, but just if the council has any questions for him regarding the specific, the solar project.
Can you go over again, just one more time, what the end product will look like on this project?
Can you?
Eric DiNardo, project engineer, also from Environmental Strategies and Management. So just to get a better idea, if you wouldn't mind going back to one more sheet. So we basically, if you look to the south and east, we increased that buffer to 75 feet of the wooded buffer. In the regulations itself, it requires 50 feet, so, for wooded. But also, one of the requests from the DPR was to possibly include a landscaped area. So due south and east, there's current abutters, so what we did was we put approximately 990 feet of the red cedar to help create more of a buffer. So everywhere around it, we were able to at least hit the regulations, and then we would have that small access road to the top. Thank you.
How long until full remediation?
The remediation happens in the summer.
Good, sorry, guys.
So again, we anticipate a remedial approval letter from the state of Rhode Island in the next, probably this month, but in the next couple of days, we're hoping. We've already put our bid documents together, but we're not going to submit, of course, until we get approval. That's both approvals. And it has been a little bit tricky. We're trying to satisfy both processes as we go. But this is, there's no water, the groundwater is about 40 feet deep here, so it's an easier project to complete even in the winter months. So we're pretty satisfied that we'll be able to get this work done in this construction season. Probably some, it's only about a four-week schedule. So once we get approval, get our contractors on board, we're about four weeks away. So we're hoping we'll be done sometime between, maybe as late as Thanksgiving, maybe a bit into December.
Yeah, I would just add that it's critical for us that they get the work done soon, because there's a federal investment tax credit that at the end of the year goes down from 30% to 26%. So we need to satisfy several conditions in terms of safe harbor provisions, and one of them, we'll be doing a little bit of site work once Mark finishes his work. But we can't count his work and our work, because it's completely separate in terms under federal law.
Any other questions up here? All right, thanks, guys. So this is a public hearing. If you would like to come and speak to this matter, please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Jim O'Neill, Matunik. If I could, I just wanted to pass out a couple maps to you.
Sure.
These maps, going all the way back to, excuse me, 1981, up to 2003, that bright-colored one you see there up front. And if you take a look at this lot, you could not have a more dense wooded area. I couldn't be more against the second lot giving up the five acres. Reason, I think, I know the territory pretty well is because that's where I learned to drive. Back in 1958, 59, I was 14 and 15. That was the place we went to drink beer, throw stones at moving targets, dodging those trucks that came in with funny barrels. And it's really odd to see here that the history of this goes to 1970. My history goes to 1958 and 59. And I would ask you just to put a thinking cap on for a minute. If you were going to get rid of some real, real bad stuff, would you go to URI Plains Road? Would you go to Rose Hill? Or would you go to a place with about 600 acres and two or three homes? Hopefully, I don't have to be challenged on that, because that's why we went up there, just to have our drag races and fun. You'll see from those maps, all this took place, they came in from Plains Road. I don't know if the Fieroi family owned it at that time in 58. I think the auto dealer in town did earlier than that. But that was, that was an area where a lot of stuff was dumped. In the early days, it was just tires and couches, but you would see those barrels come in. And even reading some of the stuff here, chloroform, arsenic, what else, lead. We certainly know, we know about it seeping into some wells, and I don't think they've done a thorough enough job. I think it ought to be about a mile radius that they look at, because where this is up there is right where the Parketuck Basin and the Point Judith Basin divide, and there are all kinds of movement, as you can imagine, with water. And just to prove a couple of things, the zoning board, when they were considering the village at Warden Pond back in 1980, 81, 82, a couple gentlemen had got up to speak, and this is all in the public record of Mr. Burrows. He took photos, all, many, many photos, back in August of 1963 of the dumping. This is on your zoning records. So this has not, the homework has not been completed here, because I would really like to know, the superfund sites that we have in town, two of them, what did they find at the base of those? And do they match what we're finding up here, or what AZ has found up here with the material you got from them, with those three chloroform, lead, and arsenic? I just know there's a lot more stuff in there. I certainly spent time up there, dodging trucks, driving, learning to drive, et cetera, drinking beers, a lot of other things. And it's something that, on one of those maps, you know, I'm not good on the computer with Google there, but you will see the roadway coming right down from Plains, right down from that property, which is now South Shore Country Club, whatever it is. And that was the route that it came in. It didn't come in Kenyon Woods Way. That's where the trucks came down. And there was quite a history there. But all of this zoning activity, and the reason they talked about it with the village of Warden Pond is because the family owned about 400 acres. And so there was a great concern, because there were many rumors of more than dumping of just of just daily garbage, that the Briggs people, I think, were fined many times by the Department of Health, DEM, and others. And we really had some good people then who were really quite concerned about this, sitting on our board, the zoning board. And I've got a lot of these, and I'm running out of money. I'm making copies for everyone here of stuff. But good members, people that cared about the environment, Tom Beatrice, Bill Kelly, Martin Lipowski, Rita Lupper, and a guy by the name of Clarkson Collins. And they knew a problem when they saw one. And we have a problem here in the main lot that's going to have the solar panels. But those maps tell you that's absolutely, if there's any regeneration, that is dense woods on this lot, the nine acres. I'm opposed to this. I think it's wrong. It's incredibly disturbing to see this kind of map. You know, I want to puke when I look at that. What good is it to have this kind of habitat damage, tree canopy damage? I mean, we're looking like Brazil and Indonesia right now. Next in line is South Kingstown for their destruction of woods. This is awful. I do have two questions. I wanted to know the size of the grant we got from the green bond. I don't know if we know that number. And do we, do we have that number?
I don't have it, but I imagine, you guys.
I'm sure it's not going to be forwarded to us right away here. But two questions. Will this revert to R80 in 20 years? Or are we going to be stuck with another commercial enterprise up there in 20 years? What did the planning board ask you to do? I'm just not clear on that. Let's see, a couple of other questions here. Oh, they were bragging about how they've got Town and Eric Gansett buying some this and that. I was up at the State House with a committee hearing that did not pass certain solar aspects up there in the Senate. And they got delivered, Brown, Brown University, said, "No, we will not buy any, any solar power, any voltage, any, anything. There's one tree taken down. They will not do that." Shame on us. Absolutely shame on us.
Thank you. Is it possible to answer the question about the grant amount?
But I'll have it surely. I just, I just emailed my project manager. Unless you folks know the exact amount. But I believe it's around $200,000 for the remediation work.
All right.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. But I'll give you exact momentarily.
Thank you.
To answer one of Mr. O'Neill's questions about what happens in 20 years, the zone change is to GI, but it's limited to solar energy use.
All right. Very good. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter?
Hi, Elise Torello here. I'm on the planning board, but I am here strictly speaking for myself this evening. First of all, I want to say that I am in favor of environmental remediation. I am very much in favor of green energy. I'm in favor of this project. My concern is with that northeasterly portion of lot, the second lot, yes, right there. There was no contamination found in that area. And the original intent of this project was to clean up the, or remediate the site and give a beneficial use to the site and hopefully produce a second buildable lot. And this project does that. But I am not comfortable with the rezoning and the moving of the lot line to include that northeasterly portion of that, of that site. I stated so in the planning board deliberations, but I just wanted to reiterate that to you folks directly. It's forested. It's not contaminated. I don't think any of us want South Kingstown to become a place where we're cutting down trees to put in green energy. So I just wanted to make sure that I express my own personal concerns about that directly to you guys, about that one portion of the lot. And that my hopes would be that if, you know, hopefully, the lot line and the rezoning would be made closer to where the actual panels are, but at least the rezoning. My concern is that if it's, if the lot line is moved to where it's depicted on this map and the rezoning matches that, that sometime in the future, that could have panels put up on it. And I don't, I don't want that to be made any easier than necessary. So I would like to see that portion of that lot not be rezoned and preferably not even included in the administrative subdivision. So.
Oh, my microphone was on.
Okay.
How big of a piece are you talking about in terms of zones?
Well, obviously, we'd need a buffer on the other side of the panels. So that, the new house lot doesn't have a house on it. Whoever buys that lot will be building on that lot. They'll know that the solar panels are there. So I would think 50 feet would be sufficient on the other side of the panels. You know, that, I would think would easily do it. There's not another house that's going to be built up in that corner, more than likely. They're probably going to, whoever buys that lot is going to build a house, I would think, closer to the road. And they're certainly going to know that all those panels are going to be there. So my concern is just that it's not easy to put panels on that in the future.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just speak into the microphone, please.
Some of the concerns, but you can't put any more panels on. We're limited by national grid. National grid has given us, this is what we can do. And they're not allowing any more because of the connection, for the interconnection. So the only way to do it was you'd have to start all over again with national grid. So we can't add more panels in 20 years, in years, in five years. We're maxed out by the sun.
So is the northeast corner of Lot 21 buildable, that northeast corner? Is that what we're looking at?
No.
To be honest, I can't really speak to the buildability. I know it's kind of landlocked there. We actually included that, one, again, the DEM wanted us to include everything. We were trying to leave a buildable lot on this site. And they were, and again, so they were pretty comfortable with us leaving a lot that was of similar size to the rest of the compound. So we did that. And you'll notice the last line that goes around the solar array, that's a limit of disturbance line. We're not planning on touching that northeast corner at all. It will, however, there will be what's called an environmental land use restriction that does remain on the entire Lot 21, including that northeast portion. So there will need to be, which is basically a deed restriction. It'll be, it'll be on the assessor's, recorded here at the assessor's office. So there will be need for permission to do any work on any portion of this project after the solar array is installed. Actually, it's after the remediation is complete. So even the solar array will need to go through the DEM. Of course, they're expecting us. And by the way, I did get a response. It's 210,000 on the remedial grant. Can I answer that?
That's great. Yeah. So I mean, that upper right-hand corner, it's wooded at this point. It's not going to be touched, basically, through this.
Correct. Correct. And it's true. That area, we do have, we, the majority of the sampling work happened in the areas where we had very good record of waste disposal and towards the developed properties on Kenyon's Wood Way. When we go out into the other, to the northern portion of the site, there's some sampling that was done. It's not as dense of a sampling grid. But we do have clean, and clean is in that area. So she's correct. By all means, we are including an area that has been identified as clean. We really did that for a couple of reasons. One, the DEM wanted it all. And number two, we wanted to try to leave enough undisturbed land on Lot 21 to come a little closer to your coverage rules, as well as to provide, again, some buffering for these other properties, while still meeting the DEM's grant, the DM grant fund guys, trying to meet their expectations with regards to power.
When I look at that diagram, is that all solar panels or is that something else? What's the shading in?
No, that, there's, there's some pathways there. So there's some, some access roads. But the ones that are parallel to each other going in an east-west direction, those are panels.
I'm unclear about what we, we're rezoning from R80 to GI, right?
There you go.
Okay.
So the original.
All right.
Eric, you want to talk?
We're extending the GI that we granted.
The GI right now, I believe is.
In December, correct?
Correct.
Okay. To include what's in the red here. Is that what's outlined in the right-hand side?
So this is actually, this is the existing lot line? If we go to, I want to say it's the following. Unfortunately, you can't really see it that well on that picture. But yeah. So that, you see that red line? That is the old existing. So everything to the east of that in what is now Lot 21 is what we're trying to rezone to GI.
Can you bring up the image that's in the agenda?
While I'm pulling this up, I would have counsel sort of explain where we are in the process and conditions that, and the ability of the counsel to impose conditions. So if I.
You can certainly impose any conditions that you think are appropriate on the zoning map amendment, including conditions relating to the location of the parcels. The array itself was reviewed and approved by the planning board, and that approval was tied to the submitted site plans. So changes can't be made to the layout of the array without further review and approval by the planning board. So that's, that's already a condition of the existing approval. You certainly can add a condition to that effect to the zoning map amendment.
Thank you. It's about half of that lot. Any further questions from?
So I'm clear. The area shaded in gray is going to be rezoned as GI, correct? What's immediate, to the bottom of that or to the south of that, I guess, is still R80? Am I correct? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the public? Please come forward to the podium and state your name.
I'm Lawrence LeBlanc, the owner of the development that encompasses this site. And we're on the west side of the property line. We're on the north side, and we're on the east side. And I brought a map here with me that shows the contour lines and also shows how it relates to our project. And the folks that are here with me are the owners and the committee that we have for association. And it's just some things I'd like to say first. We like to see the site cleaned up naturally like anybody else, just like you folks and we're next door. We brought in Suez Water, so we don't rely on wells. So that's not a concern. But it is a site that's, that is on the registry. And that affects value. And these folks are going to be able to do that, take care of that with their grant and move on. The concern we have, and we'd like to address it, is that the buffer is adequate. And I have the map to show you what we have around it. We don't have any homes directly up against it. We were required 100-foot buffer on the property where we backed up the homes. But we don't have any homes up against it. We have a golf course. And there are some areas in the golf course that have a buffer that would add to their buffer. And there's one particular corner that's kind of tight for the golf course even. So the housing on the other side, we'll see that. That's the northwest corner. That's where the golf course comes close to it. I have this map if you want to look at it. But we asked that, there are no access ever to that buffer by that landowner. There is currently a opening at the end of it that used to be on Sand Turn Plain, Plains Road, that was, Sand Plains Road, that was there. But that got moved to the boulevard. Folks use that now. And that road has been abandoned, but it's still there until we build the golf course. So that we asked that, that area is not of record, too. We'd like to have it on the deed, if that's okay, to have that from the owner. That, that property is not in any way where they can go through our property. Because they have their own way in, they said, their own way to service it.
Yeah. And I think they're going to put a fence up that would occlude that access way. But I.
No, not to have anything that can go through there. We want a record that the buffer would be there, and there wouldn't be any access through the buffer at all.
Yes.
That's a request we have.
You're saying access through the buffer or access to the buffer?
No, through the buffer onto our property. Because there was a dirt drive there that someone was using it. It was a young fellow that was using it for his nightlife. But he had a, he had a gate. And I just want to be sure that that's not something that someone will say, "We have a right to drive on your golf course."
All right. I think I understand.
Because that whole road has been moved over to our new road. They used the new road. The folks that live at the other end have that on their deed. But this isn't something that we want to see.
I understand.
And the other issue, and that was answered today to me, is that the solar panels are all facing south. And they're going uphill, facing south. So it's not like they're the other way around, where you'd be looking at possibly a reflection off the solar panels on, you know, because this, actually, the property goes up almost 50 feet from our property up. So, but that's not the case because there'll be, the backs of them will be facing the north.
Well, I'm glad that concern's taken care of. Mr. Kenyon, did you want to say something about that? Maybe a couple cedar trees could be planted in that dirt?
I do have this map. We don't have it up there, but this is our map that shows how this property relates to the golf course and the housing. And I can lay it out on that table if you, if it's all right.
I mean, I think, having looked at these maps that we were given earlier, that I understand the geography of the situation.
But our layout of the development is around three sides of this property, north, west, and the east side.
All right.
I just want one point of clarification. The golf course you're talking about is, is that the one that they're going to build? Or?
Yes. It's in the plan. It's in the layout of the plan. It's a proposed golf course that's in the plan.
I believe Mr. Kenyon wants to say something.
Yes.
Just see what it is.
Regarding the, the access, the applicant, Kirsage, has no need to access over the old historic way into the property. And in talking to the owners, the Deereoffs, they have no need for that access. And you're right, there's going to be a fence there anyway, so they wouldn't be able to access it while the, while the solar panels are there.
Does that help answer concerns? So, okay.
It's on the record with the deed.
Well, I think the fencing's required by our ordinance, so that'll. All right.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments about this project? All right.
I just have a few more questions for you. Previously, I believe you asserted that it wouldn't be feasible for you to complete full remediation prior to installing the solar panels. Is that correct?
Yes.
It wouldn't be feasible, near impossible? Is that the assertion you had made earlier? One of the requests of the planning board was that you complete full remediation of the area prior to putting the solar panels in place. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, the engineer to our right had asserted after the fact that it would take four weeks from the start of the project for full remediation to occur. Is that right?
Correct.
Now, during that four-week period, the solar panels that would be in place would generate the money to.
No, no, no. We're, there'll be no work. It'll take us three months to build the project. So the, the timeline will be that ES and M will start their remediation over a four-to-five week period. When they're finished, then we would start our work. But they'll be the only ones who will be basically doing any clearing and putting down this earthy soil cap.
So full remediation will occur before the solar panels are all on the lot and in process and working and?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that, that's where the grant comes in, because the, the work that's being done for the remediation is not being done by Kirsage. It's being done for the owners, the Deereoffs, of the, the two plots.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And do I hear a motion on item 7B?
I will make a motion that we approve item 7B.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we are going to ask that you incorporate.
Reference the planning board's letter. Is it enough for me just to have said that or?
And I just want to ask one clarifying question. That concern that the neighbors had in regards to that the fencing will take care of that? Because I, I'm having a tough time envisioning.
Yes, if the fence is required to be constructed, that effectively, I think, satisfies the neighbor's concern over access to that area.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. That brings us to item eight on the agenda, communications. Communication 8A is a resolution adopted August 13th, 2019 by the Charles Towne Town Council requesting the General Assembly to adopt legislation to clearly delineate public access to the shoreline. It's been received and placed on file. This has caused a lot of controversy and news stories in town. What do we want to do with this resolution?
Make a motion to place 8A on file.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Brings us to 8F, an email dated August 26th, 2019 from Helen Metterer and John King concerning proposed subdivision of land on Fairgrounds Road in West Kingston, seeking the town's assistance in the formation of an ad hoc stakeholders group. That's been received and placed on file. Is there somebody in the audience to speak to this communication? Oh, okay. Very good. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we refer to the town manager for a written report or to report back to us at a subsequent meeting on advising as to this.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communication J, a letter dated August 28th, 2019 from Dennis McNaul, town-appointed representative to the Wood, Pocket, Tuck, Wild, and Scenic Rivers Stewardship Council, requesting that the town council appoint Bill McCusker as the town's alternate representative to the stewardship council. I see that both of these men are in the audience. Would either of you or both of you like to come to the podium to talk about this?
I'm Dennis McNaul, and I'm the town representative to the Wild and Scenic Stewardship Committee currently. In the legislation passed by the U.S. Congress and signed by the president, there are two representatives, representative in a stewardship that should be appointed to be part of the stewardship council, which is going into the future, after a significant search for qualified individuals. That's Bill here, and I've known Bill now for about half a month, half a year. Most everyone else in the town knows him for longer than that, but encourage Bill to apply for this position as stewardship.
Very good. And Bill, you want this great responsibility on your shoulders?
Absolutely. Actually, we've, we've started working with the Conservation Commission. We put signs out about invasive species in some of the rivers, Queens River, just recently. So we're getting ready to meet with the town and town staff. So we're really starting to roll. We just need this part of it to be formal and complete.
All right, very good. This is on the agenda. Do we have, can we make a resolution right now to appoint Mr. McCusker?
I'll make a resolution to appoint.
Wait, wait, wait. One second.
And it's, the appointment is on a later portion of the agenda.
Yeah, we can do it then.
Take that item up now or later.
Hold on just a few minutes. All right, that actually brings us to the end of communications and brings us to comments from interested citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to say something? Anything? All right, any, any comments from the council?
I have a quick comment from the council, if that's okay. It really has to do with, I guess, there's a public policy participation planning board agenda item coming up, and I've had calls and emails from residents, and I guess recently there have been some meetings at the planning board where many members of the public have attended. They care about the community and want to give input. And I guess last week, people, you know, stayed for the entire meeting, which I think ended maybe around 12 or 12:00 PM or 12:00 AM, sorry. And at the very end, there were folks, I guess even senior citizens, that had waited a while, but then were told that they couldn't comment. So my concern is just making sure that if that is the case, you know, maybe during the beginning part of that meeting, we need to let people know what can be commented on and what cannot be commented on. And, you know, like I said, participation's important, so that's the key there with that. You know, if I had sat through a meeting all night long, and I know it's difficult, and, you know, planning board meetings in every town can go long, that maybe we should also look at a better way to manage that, even if it takes another meeting. And I, I think when you get to a certain point at night, you might be tired, and you might just want to be pushing stuff through to get it done. I'm not saying that's happening, but that human behavior, you know, so it's just something to look at and also to, to be cognitive of what this new policy is going to be coming.
Any other comments from the council? All right, town manager's report.
Right, well, I'll start the report actually responding to Councilman DeCruze's concern, because it is a concern we've heard about here at Town Hall as well, and in fact is the reason that the item is on the agenda for the planning board during their work session tomorrow night. We need to make sure that the public understands what can be commented on, what the procedures are at those, those public meetings, and it's not perfectly clear that everyone has had that information up front. We want to make sure that folks know that some actions being taken, some discussions are absolutely a place where full public comment and public input is necessary as a matter of law and proper and, you know, always privileged. There are other areas where the planning board has historically accepted comment that isn't necessarily required by law and isn't as privileged. It's particularly on pre-applications, where you have an applicant who is thinking about coming in with an application. It's a very preliminary part of the process, and that was the kind of application, a kind of procedure that was being dealt with on the last couple of meetings by the planning board. What's important at the work session is for the planning board to have the discussion, to talk through what it is they want to design, and how they want to communicate the rules that are mandated and the procedures that they want to follow going forward, so that there is one set of, of rules, if you will, that are clearly articulated and uniformly applied going forward. I, I think that this is a good step for the planning board to be taking, to simply have the discussion, lay it out. It's not in writing at this point. Put it in writing, get it down, and publicize it, so that the public's expectations and understanding of what should happen at a planning board meeting are clear and understood and not subject to, well, why didn't I get the chance to comment at this point, but maybe it happened at a meeting that was similar some time ago. There needs to be a clear set of rules, and those rules need to be uniformly applied. That's what the planning board is intending to do or start doing. I, I can't really speak for the planning board in whether or not they're going to successfully complete that conversation in one work session, but that's the objective, is to, to just get those rules down and come up with a communication plan so that the public understands what the rules are. So I, I agree with you. The frustrations are frustrations we've heard, there are frustrations that I know the planning board has heard. They want to make sure that they're being as transparent, as open, as clear, as consistent as they can possibly be. So they're going to put this on their agenda tomorrow night, they're going to talk about it tomorrow night, and they expect to be able to express to the public exactly what's going to happen in public meetings going forward.
Good.
There's, I will further comment. There's nothing in, in this that anyone has suggested to me is designed to reduce people's ability to comment. Nobody is looking for a way to shut the public out. They're looking for ways to bring the public in that are productive and effective. We don't want folks sitting around for hours and hours and hours waiting to comment to get to a point in the meeting where there just isn't the opportunity, the time left in a meeting. The planning board was in session, I understand, until midnight or just after midnight at its last meeting. At some point, when you're not dealing with a statutorily required comment period, it gets real hard to say, "We're going to, we're going to stay here for another hour for comments on an action that don't require public comment and are preliminary in nature, not, not, not a decision point." When you know that in the future, the opportunity for comment will arise, and the, the public will in fact have a legal right to comment. We've got to just make sure that the rules are clear and that everybody's opportunity to comment and to involve, be involved in the process isn't frustrated by facts on the ground or by, by circumstances that arise when you get long meetings or that kind of thing.
Right. And, you know, it really has to do with also perception, because if they don't know what the rules are, they're assuming it's a certain way, you don't allow them to comment, and they feel they don't have a voice.
That's right. And in fact, I don't think that everyone fully appreciates, and I don't mean to go too far into this, but this is, we're now sort of into the theory of public policymaking, and it's, it's an important thing to remember that applicants do have rights as well. And if you're inviting the wrong kind of involvement, you're infringing on a property right that applicants have. So I, I don't want to push any of that too far, but my point is you're balancing the public's right to comment, which is defined by statute, and the applicant's right to due process, which is defined by our Constitution, state and federal, and statute. We have to balance those things, and you want to make sure that you're not taking anyone's rights away. Not always easy. That's why boards and commissions, you know, are just extraordinary bodies. The folks who do this as, as volunteers in municipalities across Rhode Island and across the country are really doing a phenomenal thing. They subject themselves to criticism, sometimes founded, sometimes because there's this misunderstanding. We want to make sure that folks don't misunderstand, that the motivations here are the best motivations, and if there's a mis, you know, communication, it's usually because folks are trying to balance those competing objectives and interests. The conversation is tomorrow night. Let's see where they go with it.
Thank you.
So I will start off the manager's report by pointing out that the application for review by the federal government for a relief from the restriction on the town farm park has been sent in draft form to the Department of Environmental Management. They are doing a informal review. We are doing that informal review while some of the legwork that needs to be done locally by the hospital in finding value for, an appraisal for, and some of the sort of strategies about acquisition of a replacement property are done. So the hospital's engaged in going out and doing the appraisal work and making sure that we have a place to go should we get the approval from the federal government to transfer the town farm property in exchange for another. That other is really the, the hospital's parcel they've got to identify, they've got to make sure that the value is equal to what we're taking. But the preliminary review, the informal review by DEM is underway. They will also provide us guidance on whether or not they think the application we've drafted is sufficiently detailed and persuasive, that it will meet with approval by the federal government. They, of course, are basing that sort of assessment on their experience. They don't have a magic wand or a magic crystal ball and can't tell us for sure that the feds will do one thing or the other, but they can give us a sense of whether or not they think we've checked the right boxes. We continue to be short-staffed at the Senior Center. This is beginning to be a challenge for us. We're finding it difficult in this job market to find three-hour-a-day, part-time work. We are exploring alternatives, but I will say that Sue Demasi has stepped in and is just keeping the place running. It's beginning to wear on, on our current staff, Sue in particular. We need to figure out how to solve this problem. If anybody is interested in a three-hour-a-day job from about 11 o'clock in the morning through the lunch, the lunch hour, by all means, please give us a call, because we need help at the Senior Center. We did have a dog attack at the animal shelter. We had an employee who was bitten by a dog and are currently reviewing the dog's history and some recommendations that we received with regard to that attack and the dog. It is, it was a pretty significant attack, and we're weighing some unpleasant possibilities with regard to that circumstance. We'll say that we've been looking at the radio replacement program for the Police Department EMS and the fire services here in town. We have received a consultant's initial review of the best built or what the, the good build-out of a new system would be. The price tag is. The price tag is, at least preliminarily, more than we expected, and we're going to have a conversation with the consultant and try to figure out whether there's anything that can be shaved off of that. But the design that they've put together is substantially beyond the budget that we were anticipating. The 30-day comment period for the comprehensive plan will begin next week. Folks have been looking for that for a long time, and the opportunity to comment will finally begin next week. Now, the process that will be pursued here is that we will have an open 30-day period for comment, where written comments to the plan can be submitted to the planning board. There will then be a public hearing where the public can come in, just as at any other public hearing, and provide comments. Both the written comments received during the 30-day comment period and the comments at the public hearing will be treated equally. They'll be given equal weight, but we just thought that the opportunity to do it in writing over a period of time gave more folks a chance to participate in the final development of the comp plan. Another way that the planning board is trying to make sure that we are inclusive in giving folks the ability to comment. Not just one public hearing at one time, but a comment period for 30 days in that I will also point out that the Planning Department has had a survey posted for the last couple of weeks. SK Homestyle is a survey of residents trying to find out what styles and types of housing conditions and circumstances folks would like to see in town, what they like about what's here now and what they'd like to see in the future. That survey has been up for about two weeks now and has over 200 respondents who've completed the survey so far. Some interesting preliminary information coming out of that survey, and we're hoping to be able to report on the full survey results relatively soon.
Is there a goal as to the number of respondents we're looking for?
There isn't. As many as we can get. I mean, the more information we get, the better. If we had to close the survey for some reason tomorrow, we'd have enough information that I think we could make some, take some meaningful conclusions away from the data, but more is always better. The larger the number of respondents, the more, you know, we're going to know about what folks really think about housing styles. One of the interesting subsets of questions relates to accessory dwelling units, which is a topic the council has had a good deal of interest in and involvement in. And we are seeing some interesting data there. I think we're going to be able to draw some conclusions about what might serve as good incentives for the development of accessory units.
A quick question.
Sure.
Is it possible for us to send that survey out to folks that have registered for updates on the town website?
We're sending it to everybody we've got a contact with.
Okay.
So we've sent it to the boards and commissions. We're sending to-
I've got it, you know, I've received it personally as well, so I must have signed up for something at some point.
We're trying to get it out as far and wide as we can, and will continue to do so. I think we're good for another, three, two? Two more weeks on the survey? Another couple of weeks. I will also point out that the Planning Department has started a project with URI. You'll remember the Sagatucket River study that was done by the URI students a couple of years ago. The same group, more new students, but the same studio will be engaging in a study of Old Tower Hill Road, sort of looking at what type of redevelopment pattern makes sense on Old Tower Hill Road, sort of building on, there was a visual preference survey done by Doug McLean when he was here, sort of building on that work and trying to identify village elements on the corridor that could be extended from downtown Wakefield out onto Old Tower Hill Road. That is an agreement between the town and URI for short money, part of the money that we save with a director not having been there. This is part of the fruits of Kayla's sacrifice, with some of the funds that have been freed up because we are saving the salary that we've been saving for the last three months. We're going to be able to take care of that. Small change with the URI studio, I think it's $4,900, and we'll get a full report from URI, a full review by professional architects who work with the studio, and Will Green, who's the director over at the Landscape Architecture Program. So we're looking forward to working that into and meshing that with sort of the SK Homestyle survey and the work that Horsley Witten has been working on related to mixed use in housing rezoning recommendations. All these things hopefully are going to come together just about the same time as we'll be coming to the council with some recommendations about incentives for promotion of affordable housing. So we're getting there. It's starting to come together. I will also note for the public that today is actually the 74th anniversary of Debugging Day. On this date in 1945, Grace Hopper, who would become the first woman to serve as Admiral in the United States Navy, was working as a programmer at the Harvard Computation Laboratory, and she found the problem that was keeping one of their computers from working. She found that there had, was a bug that had crawled into one of the open circuits. She took the bug out, wrote a memo saying she had debugged the system, and stapled the bug or taped the bug to the memorandum. With the number of recent cyber attacks on municipalities here in South Kingston, we thought tonight would be a good time to bring the council up to speed on some of the threats and challenges we've faced, being that it is the 74th anniversary of Debugging Day.
Solicitors' report?
Have nothing to report to the council tonight.
Thank you. And that brings us to appointments. Yes, let's do a few of them.
Right. I'll make a resolution to appoint Bill McCusker to the Wood, Pocket, Tuck Rivers Stewardship Council as the alternate representative.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And, yeah.
Make a resolution to reappoint Jennifer Kruger to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Fayn Hope to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution for reappointment to the Conservation Commission of Christopher Connor and J. Vernon Wyman.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Actually, we have more interviews on the-
There is.
One stewardship and a-
Susan Berry has applied for several positions. I don't know if that would change our calculations about that.
I think we still would want to hold the interview.
Yeah. Okay.
And then on the statistical modeling, I mean, maybe it's empty. I'm happy to make the resolution for Henry.
I would be in favor of that.
Resolution to appoint Henry Meyer to the-
Thayer.
-committee. I'm sorry, Henry Thayer.
Second.
All right. So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It'd be funny if we suddenly appointed Henry Meyer to it.
Yeah. Thayer. Smart.
Smart.
That takes us to 13 new business, and we've taken care of a number of these. 13E is a resolution authorizing an award of purchase to JWC Environmental of Costa Mesa, California, for a JWC environmental channel monster replacement cutter assembly in an amount not to exceed $19,737, further described in a memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated August 5th.
Motion to approve 13E.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 13G is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to automatic temperature controls of Cranston, Rhode Island, for replacement of one rooftop HVAC unit at the South Kingston Senior Center in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $14,410, and further described in a memo from the Director of Senior Services to the Town Manager dated September 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve item 13G.
Second.
So moved.
I don't know if we should be approving any more air conditioners until we get one in council chambers.
How is it so warm in here?
It's heat.
We're getting split mini ducks next-
We get heat.
All right. I heard a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. 13J, resolution authorizing an award of contract to Easton Wind Water Works Supply Company of West Bridgewater, Massachusetts, for a fixed-based automated water meter reading system and water meter installations for the South Shore and Middle Bridge water systems. At the proposal, unit prices with authorization that the Water Division Enterprise funds unrestricted net assets be used for the subject improvements, and is further detailed in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager.
I'll make a motion that we approve item 13J.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And that brings us to the end of our public business. We are going to have a closed executive session, and we'll need a motion to move into that.
I'll make a motion that we move into closed executive session, closed executive session pursuant to RIGL 42-46-5A3 to discuss matters pertaining to security, including but not limited to the deployment of security personnel or devices.
Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you all for coming tonight.